We have a few staff members here. Maybe just wave. Tammy Reeve, Dr. Karen Johnson, and one of those awesome people with the national certification, Candace Waltz. I also have three fourth grade students here with me. This is Tori, Devon, and Nick. Nick's scored that bad call, he's kind of worried about it. And then the barbs hour is our class lot. She's here to help us with our presentation. So I think we'll get started. So many of you might remember the model schools group that reported back to you in August about the big ideas that we took away from that conference. At that time, I spoke to you about Makerspaces and how excited I was to see what Eda Sherman had seen with that concept. So just to review, Eda Sherman, sorry, a Makerspace is a collaborative workspace for making, learning, exploring, and sharing. We encourage a mindset of creating something out of nothing using curiosity and imagination. We use current technology to help prepare kids for critical skills they will need in the fields of science, technology, engineering, and math. Within our Makerspace, we hope to foster higher motivation with new ways to engage, to facilitate learning that feels relevant to students, and to give them opportunities to create and experiment using a variety of media and tools. We want to encourage these connections to their home, through their school, to our community, and to the world. So tonight, we have some of our students to show you what they can do.
Hello, we are fourth graders at Eda Sherman. My name is Nick Beehill.
And my name is Tori Singmanee.
One of the new activities we have done this year is learning coding, which is telling a machine a series of commands. We do this through an iPad app called Tinker. We started by using coding to move a cartoon character through, over, and around a series of obstacles, to reach a final destination. If the camera moves, we must enter the correct codes in the correct order, or the cartoon will not reach its destination. We used our own individual iPads for this activity.
After several sessions of using the Tinker app with a cartoon character on our own, we've moved on to using coding to fly a drone. We needed the gym for this activity to give us more space. Our class was divided into six groups. Each group had an iPad and a drone that are connected through a wireless connection. Each group's task was to use coding to have the drone take off, move forward, and land in a certain hula hoop. The commands each group uses to try to achieve this is up to them.
If the drone does not land in the hula hoop, the group must figure out why and talk with each other about how they want to change their coding command. Maybe they want to change the order, maybe change how many seconds the drone moves forward, or how fast the drone is moving. There are many different coding combinations that can be used to make the drone fly and land in the hoop. If the drone does land in the hoop, the hoop is moved farther away, and the challenge is going to begin. At the end of each activity, the group talks about the changes they've had to make and why they made them.
Through this activity, we were able to learn from our mistakes, make necessary changes, and work together with the rest of our group. It's also pretty cool to watch.
Now we will show you what the drone can do. We have put in some commands.
The drone will take off, move up, flip forward, flip backwards, and land. We don't have as much room in here as in the gym, so these are not the exact commands being used in our school activity.
So we just wanted to give you kind of a firsthand look. This is not, you'll see later on in our presentation how we use it in the gym, but this is what their screen looks like when they're putting in commands. The drone is connected by a Bluetooth connection to the iPad, and of course, the iPad is connected wirelessly to the wireless router. The takeoff button is right here. Once they hit that, whatever commands they have put in, that's what the drone is going to do in that order. So the drone, hopefully, will take off, it'll go up, and we usually have it go forward, but I'm not going to do that tonight. It's going to go up, it's going to flip forward, flip backward, and then land. So, press start button?
Can you talk with you?
Okay, what else do you have to say?
I like Eda Sherman a lot because we have fun and use this type of technology that we will use later in life.
I like Eda Sherman because sometimes Mrs. Botts will eat with us, which is probably mostly okay, and that she's a very nice person and always wearing a funny hat.
In my opinion, Eda Sherman is my favorite school because all the teachers are very nice, are very understanding, nice and caring.
And so, what we started with, first of all, my name is Dana Campbell, and I'm a librarian. This is my first year as a librarian. I was previously a PE teacher, and when Mrs. Botts asked me to be the librarian, it was kind of a mutual decision. I knew nothing about Makerspaces. She said, "Have you heard of Makerspaces?" I said, "What's that?" So over the summer, we kind of researched, and we talked about how can we use different tools to make what we're teaching fun, relevant, incorporate everybody in the class, instead of just sitting there listening to somebody lecture? So this was one thing we used. We have six drones at our school. We got a pretty good deal from an educational website, and we have a free app that we use. This is called Tinker, T-Y-N-K-E-R. And so when we first started with this, go ahead and move to the next slide. When we first started with this, wait a pause. On the app, you start with simple coding commands, and it's a game. So in this instance, what they're trying to do, they're trying to get that preacher there, kind of in the shaded black, across, walking, it's got an obstacle, the bottle cap, go over the bottle cap, and trying to get to the candy. And to do this, you've got to use different commands in the correct order. Doesn't work, you don't move on to the next level. So there's a lot of trial and error in this. So we started with the game. Each person had their own iPad. It starts very basic. And then as you go from level to level, it gets more and more complicated. So then after we used that, then we moved on to the drones. And so, I'm going to show the drones at the end, but drones are not the only thing that we've used. We found these cardboard tools for building cardboard, really inexpensive, for like $130. They sent us about 500 plastic screws, about 12 saws, little plastic saws, 12 screwdrivers. What you can use, what we've used those for, is just building things with cardboard. Screws connect the cardboard, you use the screwdriver, you can use the saw to cut through the cardboard, or you can cut a little indentation in both pieces of the cardboard to connect them also. What I found, the first time we used these, before we used them, I had used these tools, and I thought, oh, I can screw in a screwdriver into two pieces of cardboard really easily. I'm not a second, third, or fourth grader. It was really difficult for them. So you see them, this I think was the second time, the second class I had used this with, the cardboard, for them to screw into two pieces of cardboard took a lot of time, and we don't have a lot of time in the class. So we used thinner pieces of cardboard the next time. But what you'll see, go ahead and go on to the next slide, everybody's engaged. They have something that they're trying to build. They're working together as groups. When I started this, first time we did this, I said, "I want your group," about five people in the group, "to decide what you want to build." I'm not going to give you any parameters, really. What do you want to build? A building, a robot, your house, anything? So they had to work together as a group to achieve that. And so we've used it a couple of times, and once we used the thinner cardboard, it was a whole lot easier for them. So I was learning along with them. Next thing that we bought, this was even more inexpensive. This is called a robot mouse. This is using coding also, and it comes with these green squares. You connect the green squares in a maze. Challenge is to get the mouse from a starting point to the end to get its cheese. And you'll see a picture of the mouse. Close up of the mouse. So the arrows telling it to go forwards, backwards, left or right. In the group, they have to figure out, how many times do we need to have it move forward? Then do we need to have it move left or right? Do we need to have it go backwards? They have to do that in the correct sequence. Otherwise, as you'll see here in a minute, the mouse won't make it to the cheese. Really, really challenging, but we bought two of these sets. Each set was like $35 on Amazon. Really, really a good buy. So this group, you'll see a pretty complicated maze. But not the correct commands. So, next group, this one actually goes halfway off of the maze. Go ahead and pause that. When I did this with groups, I had usually a group of six. Each person had a job. One person's job, or one or two, their job was to make the maze. Somebody else's job was to put in the correct code for the mouse. You'll also see these cards right here with arrows on them. There was a job for another person to put the arrows in the correct sequence that they want the person putting in the code directly into the mouse. That was the sequence that they wanted them to put in. And I told the person putting the code into the mouse, I said, "You've got to put in exactly what they have in the cards." So I let them work together with that person, give them suggestions. But whatever was down, as far as those cards, that's what they had to put in. Again, with this, all I had to do was introduce what we're doing, and then I could step back and watch them. And for a teacher, that's a dream. I don't have to walk around, there's no behavior problems, I don't have anybody off task, they're all, it's really, really engaging, and it's a lot of fun to watch. So then, we moved on to the drone. Go ahead and pause it. Again, we used the gym, our gym for this, and one of the big challenges for me with this, knowing that there's going to be six drones, and we have a small gym, how am I going to position each group so that I don't have drones flying into another group? Okay, obviously, safety. So we figured that out. And then their challenge, each group had their own iPad, their own drone that's connected. Their challenge is to fly from a starting point, usually a black line, and they have their own hula hoop, that they're trying to, again, put in the codes, which I showed you earlier, and get the drone to land in that hula hoop. A lot of trial and error. First time we did it, everybody was like, geez, how do we do this? The codes that they can put in, when it's going forwards, that's one command, but in that command, they can tell it how far or for how long they want it to go forward. One second on up to 150 seconds. First class I taught with this was a fourth grade class, I gave them no parameters as far as how, as far as how long they could have it fly. So I had a group have it going forward for 150 seconds. It flew into the speaker on the wall. I had to get up on a ladder and get it down. So I learned maximum three or four seconds for it to go forward. They could also have it go backwards, and they could also set the speed on the drone in a percentage, anywhere from zero to 100. So if they get it to fly and it doesn't go into the hula hoop, how are they going to change those commands? Okay, so they have to talk with their group, maybe we want to change the speed, maybe we don't want it going forward for very long. So you'll see this group didn't quite make it in there. Next group, close. And then the last group here, before I show this, I've done this with second, third, and fourth grade. Every class I've had, I've had at least one group get it to land inside the hula hoop. The two fourth grade classes I've taught, I've had every group eventually get it into the hula hoop. And that's a big, a big deal for each group, as you'll see. So a lot of fun to teach, I mean, I can't say that enough. And I've been really thankful, thankful to Mrs. Botts for allowing me to teach some of these things along with my library classes.
So as you can see, we're trying some new things. We're trying to, I know that they have a big robotics club at the high school that recently is winning some awards, so this is kind of the precursor for those coatings and the robots and all these things. So I really hope that these three continue with that, and that all of our kids are learning some community skills and world level skills that they can take on to them, to the middle school, high school, and beyond.
Questions for us?
Is Makerspace purchased through curriculum or through technology, or how is that brought into the building?
It's not really a curriculum. It's anything. You can use tools, like he's using those little plastic tools to build things with recycling, which is what we use for cardboard. Teachers are recycling, they're trash every day. It can be just as simple as that, or it can be as complex as big drones and lots of computer equipment and all of those kinds of things. It's really what you can sustain and what you can bring in and...
So is it a software program that we purchase, or is it just something you access freely through the internet?
Yes, you can get on the internet, you just look, just Google Makerspaces, and a ton of stuff comes up, and there are all kinds of apps. There are places that have sewing machines, and they let their kids sew things during the day, create those kinds of things. I mean, it's anything, anything where kids can get in and create and use their imagination and just have that time to show that creativity and show. I can tell you too, the first time that Danny started teaching some of these lessons, our kids were a little bit unsure of what to do. Because I, you know, I think in the past, we've told them, this is what you need to learn, and this is what I want you to do. And a Makerspace really is, here's your stuff, go for it. I mean, they had no imagination, and they really had to get used to accessing their own brains and really using thinking skills to create things or do things. David? Go ahead.
First time I taught the cardboard, all I had basically was, okay, let's saw this, and then screw this, I'm screwing a piece of cardboard into nothing. You know, basically what it was. So that's when I gave them no parameters. I said, "Build what you want." Next time, I showed them a picture of, it was a building that I had found. I said, "Can you build this? How are you going to build this?" But yeah, like Christie said, they had no idea. They were like, "What do we do?" I thought I had done a good enough job explaining it. Maybe it was partly my fault, I don't know, but they were like, "Okay, what would do?" So we built on it, now we've had a lot of success.
I also wanted to thank the students. You guys did an amazing job with your speaking, which tells me that you've got quite a bit of confidence. You can't speak like that. No, I'm not, no, I'm right. I also want you to know that when we went to school, there was no such thing as a drone, wireless internet. We had cardboard, didn't we? That's about it. So the fact that you got the opportunity to learn with these amazing tools is pretty awesome. So good job, and congratulations on what you guys are learning. That's exciting.
I want to say I really appreciate not only the creativity part of it, but the opportunity for them to come and work on those motor skills that I feel like have been put on the back burner in the classroom. Just watching them screw drivers and, you know, build that kind of stuff. Give them opportunity to use those motor skills, they don't necessarily get to do them.
My science teacher, Heather Mitchell, has a station in her classroom called the Tinker Shop, and people donate used computers and...
Stereos.
...stereos and things that aren't working anymore, and she just lets them take them apart and see what's inside them.
I never got to do it, because the group of four would always make a jumbo mess.
That's a problem with this setup.
And then I wouldn't be able to do it.
But they get to use real screwdrivers and real things to take those things apart, and they're always amazed at what's inside of those little chips. And we have one little guy that noticed some copper stuff, and can I have that? My dad takes that in, and it's ready for that.
I'm taking notes.
Yeah.
I think this is really great. It combines a lot of the skills that we teach in different subject areas into one project or group activity. And it also helps encourage these kids to think creatively. And I think that's one of the things that our nation has to bring back, is the creative aspect of our nation. And you all did a great job with the drones, so we're really, we're really excited to see what you all are going to do in the future. It's looking really bright. Thank you. Please come through and shake our hands. I'm excited to hear your performance.
You're just dying to do that for your job. I'm excited to come tonight. Thank you for coming. Good job. I like the fact that you're lucky to go from church to my charity, whatever it takes, right? Good job, thank you. Thank you. Great job. I'm glad you came here today. I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're here. Great job. I'm thrilled. This is so good. Thank you. Good job. I'm glad you came here today. I'm glad you're here. 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 At this point, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would be, the consent agenda, item D1 through 48.
Second, second authority. Any questions? All in favor, please raise your hand. Moving on to the technology plan update. Any questions?
Yeah.
We're going to have a drone for every action.
One drone initiative?
That was a great piece. It was a segue to us.
I thought you paid for that.
That's a great group to follow.
I would have.
I think there's enough drift for everything.
We did not prepare a presentation, but because we wanted to give you this, I can, I have a digital copy if I need to send it out. Before we start, here's how we got to where we are right now. You guys spoke, we heard you. We were told we needed to look at integrating technology K8, which we wanted to have, so we started pushing it. And we got our tech steering committee together, and we expanded it. We added lots of folks. We asked people from every grade level, every content area, and every building to come join us. Not everybody was excited to come join us, but we did get a lot. We have about, there's over 30 people now in our committee. And we started developing a plan to test how we could better put technology in grades K8. We know we're great at the high school. We wanted to follow in that model, but K8 isn't high school, so we had to look at things differently. Roxy sent out an email to all principals and said, "Look, we're going to run some pilots. We would like to know who's interested, and you have a teacher maybe that would like to be involved in that." So we did get responses back from them, and from that, we selected our pilot groups. We had nine teachers involved, running seven different scenarios. Am I right on my numbers?
Yeah.
Numbers are hard, so it's seven different scenarios. And somebody said, "How are you going to decide what's the best?" They all have a lot of pluses. There's two that have really been minuses, but we learned that, we've learned it. So Casey's going to talk to you about each one of those scenarios, what those look like in those buildings, or in six buildings, nine teachers, but six buildings. And then we'll talk about what our teachers told us to propose in parts work. So I didn't ask our teachers to come here today. They will be at the next board meeting when we, I think it's in April, where we're going to talk about our pilots, but I let them off the hook. I said, "You just give us your feedback, and then we'll share that with you."
Okay, so some nuts and bolts of the pilots that we chose. We kind of wanted to get an idea of how lots of different things might operate. We know that how iPads work because of our experience at the high school, so we're very comfortable with that model. Plus, in our experience, that's the one we feel like has a lot of potential to continue to grow, even in K8, probably more so, I think Lain and I will both feel maybe K8. But, so we wanted to have, obviously, those out there, and so we'll kind of go through here in a second. But we also have a BDI, which is a virtual desktop, which one of our technicians went to some trainings on to proxy with them. And what the goal of that BDI, which is at Florence Wilson in fourth grade, that program, they took some old laptops that had gone through their lifecycle. They were no longer, as the machine itself, able to kind of sustain a classroom activity. They just had gotten to a point where they were old enough, that they weren't keeping the speed up, login times were slow, those kinds of things. So they had already been retired, but with virtual desktop, what we can do is take all the hard work off of the computer, and they actually communicate with the server back here at the building, and that's where all the hard work is taking place. That computer now can be used to run the same programs that they would run on any other laptop, for the most part, but they don't have to have all the horsepower inside. And so we're kind of repurposing those. We're having some successes there. The kid with at least login times, and getting kids busy and keeping them going in their activities, we're finding some challenges as well. Lain's going to talk about some of those later. But that's one model that we've got out there. It's just an opportunity to see if we can utilize some of the technology we have currently in the district that's no longer usable. We also have a BYOD program, which is not on here, that's the one we forgot. When you said seven, I was like, no, there's six, but it is seven. We had one school who was really eager to at least try a BYOD, which is bring your own device to school. That's at VO in second grade, fourth grade, sorry, with Sarah Harris is teaching that. And so at Christmas break, when we said, "Hey, we're going to run a pilot, BYOD in your building..." uh, what are you gonna do? What's the first steps? And so she sent letters home to parents saying, hey, this is an opportunity we're gonna offer your students. Uh, if you have a device that you wanna send with your student to school, uh, we'll be utilizing them in class. And I think all but seven initially said that they could bring a device of some kind. Uh, and they have, if you go in her classroom, they have everything. Uh, cell phones, uh, tablets, some iPads, some Android tablets. A couple of kids have brought actual laptops. Um, so it's a pretty wide variety of things that are going on in that room. We supplemented those other seven kids with some iPads just so that everybody could participate in the activities. Um, and so she's running that pilot. Again, there are some challenges there, um, that we're finding with, with that program. Uh, some that we kind of anticipated and some that she's finding how she uses them in the classroom and, uh, devices getting broken and all kinds of little nuances that are gonna have to be worked out in a program like that. So, uh, she's running that and, and I think having some, uh, good success. Uh, but also we're realizing some things that we have to address as well. Um, everywhere else is running some version of an iPad model. Um, we have two...
I'm sorry, I have one question. You said only seven Makerspace out of how many? Cause I mean, if it's seven out of...
Twenty-three in the class.
Yeah, twenty-three.
It started off seven participating. Several of the students have now broken their own devices. So that number that has them to take them to the classroom, um, has decreased. So we had to supplement some more. So it's twenty-three, seven initially. And I, I think it's up to nine now that don't have a device in, so that we supplement.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to say on that question, I was gonna forget later on.
No, that's good. Seven out of nine is really great, you know, it's not very bad. So, uh, so yeah, that's good. Um, all of our other models then are iPads of some variants. Uh, we have two that are using iPads that we have, uh, in the high school. Uh, after kids have graduated, they're iPad twos that we just have in sto- in storage at the time. We're like, we gotta get these devices out and get them used. So we have Jenny Wilson, uh, first grade, uh, was, was the youngest grade that we're piloting with. She's got a classroom set. Um, it's a one-to-one, but, uh, all of our models are, are basically one-to-one. The kids have a device that's checked out to them. Uh, but they're not taking them home in any of our i, any of our models. So, um, in the classroom, they have a device that's designated to be theirs. Um, they use it every day. They go to the cart to get it, really they're just charging. Um, and so she's in first grade with that model. And then also Charles Stones in a fifth grade, kind of an intervention, uh, it's not intervention, it's a...
Resource math.
Resource math class. Um, Sarah Kowinski's running one there. It's a smaller group. She has twelve iPads in that classroom. Um, but with a different kind of student where they're coming in to get supplemental help in their math classes. And so she's running iPad two's, uh, there. And we chose to do that model just because we had those devices. Uh, to see how they functioned in the, in the classroom at the lower grades, um, just so we could get some data that way. Um, the others are running newer iPads. They're running the iPad Air twos, which is what our, uh, freshman got this year. Uh, that's the model that Apple sells at the education pricing right now. Um, two of them are using iPads we had after the freshman purchase that we could kinda repurpose and get out there. Um, and then one classroom, we bought new iPads for because Apple has a new, uh, shared mode where the kids can log in and log out of the iPad, kinda like you do on a laptop in that traditional setting. And so in that classroom, he's got third graders and fourth graders. And so they, two kids share the same device. So when the third grader's there, that's their device. When they leave, they log out and another kid logs in, uh, fourth grade. So, that's a model we wanted to test, um, to see what the viability of how that functions and what takes place. If they had to have bigger, uh, storage capacities because of the saving information for every kid on their device. So that's why you see, uh, at that, at Ginny Barker's where that's taking place, um, they have to have that little bit bigger storage space. Um, and so, that's a great opportunity for us to see something brand new that Apple got just in the last six months. Um, we wanted to try it out. We wanted to see if it, if it had value for our, for our classrooms. Um, the other two are, go ahead.
So are those, so are those leased? Or do you guys purchase those from Apple or are you renting them or...
We purchased those outright. We wanted to try that pilot. Um, I'm sure it did with the pilot. Uh, we haven't discussed fully with the teachers what's gonna happen next year when the pilots are over. But, um, we're hoping, you know, that we can leave those in there. But, uh, we did have to buy those.
We bought thirty of them.
Enough to rent his classroom.
For that classroom?
For that classroom.
Yeah.
First graders.
Third, fourth.
Those are third and fourth grade at Ginny Barker.
Don't lie to numbers, Adam.
I know.
Get it late.
That's why, that's why.
That's why we got you a sheet, you concerned.
I need a draw.
I knew you would never remember. Yep, so that's third and fourth grade. Uh, then we have a fourth grade school at, uh, Georgia Matthews, uh, that's running iPad Air twos as well. And then our three teachers at Bernie sits running iPad Airs as well. And they are actually sharing the device. Uh, the kids have a device that's theirs and they travel with it through those three teachers. Uh, that's their core area. Um, so that's, that's their team. And so that group gets to take their iPads with them. Uh, the unique thing that we're seeing there is they have, uh, how many teams of kids do they have?
Ten, three.
They have three teams. So they have one team that has devices and two teams adults. So they're getting, we're getting to kinda see that side of things where they have kids that have devices and how they're adapting their classroom. And we're gonna see how they're managing to keep their other classrooms without the devices and kinda see how that plays out.
Um, I have been complained to by one of these students who is not in the pilot class. And he wants to know why he can't have an iPad and is very upset. I tried to explain the bandwidth and everything like that. He's not buying it. He wants his own iPad. He needs the wheelchair. So, I told him I would say something.
Yes. That's not the first we've heard of it.
Okay.
All three of those iPad Air classrooms, uh, Sitz and Ginny Barker and fourth grade at, at Georgia Matthews, all are also running a new product by Apple, uh, with the iPad twos where they have a classroom management piece. So the teacher, um, gets to actually see what's on the kid's device. Um, it hasn't been something we could offer at the high school yet, uh, just because of, it, it is fairly new and their devices wouldn't support it until recently. So, uh, we're getting to get some hands on for our sake. Uh, but it has also been great to see the teachers because they can pull up all of their kids. They can see their devices, see if they're in the app they're supposed to be. They can redirect them if they're not and say, hey, we're all gonna go to this website. And it pushes all the devices to that place, uh, opens the apps for them if they need them to. Uh, what we're really finding that they really like is they all got Apple TVs as well. Uh, if you're not sure what that is, it's, it's just a communication device for media content and movies and those kinds of things. We're not using it for that in the classroom. Uh, what it does allow us to do is mirror their iPads, uh, to the projector so they don't have to be actually plugged in. So a teacher can be mobile all over the classroom, uh, which is their favorite thing, I think, of the whole deal. They, they rave about their Apple TV. But what they can do is on my device, I can pull up any kids and project their work. And when, when I talks about the positives in a minute, um, that comes out a lot. Uh, because they really like being able to say, oh, I see Johnny's doing a great job. Hey, let's everybody take a look, stop what you're doing, take a look at what math, what Johnny's got. His math problem figured out. Let Johnny explain it. It gives a lot of ownership and it's just a, a new opportunity. And so we wanted to pilot that as well. And that's kinda why we have Air twos out there in so many places is because that's a new piece we wanted to try as well.
Well, I wanted you to explain Apple TV a little bit more. Cause I know when my husband told me he wanted one, I'm thinking, you know, five hundred thousand dollar big huge TV. Um, you know, cause that was when they first came out. So, for those people who don't know what an Apple TV is, can you explain that it's probably about this big?
Yeah, it's about the size of a hockey puck, a little bigger. Um, and it just connects to your, any TV. It's just an additional piece. Uh, and what we're doing with them really is only the mirroring piece where they can show their iPad. Uh, but if you bought one for your home, it's like a Chromecast or, uh, Amazon, uh, Firestick. It's a media streamer. Uh, and so there isn't the availability of all that content. Uh, but we haven't, you know, really had that chance to push our teachers that way because they'll need that content that way. Uh, but unfortunately, Apple doesn't sell something that just has the mirroring piece in it. So we have to buy the, the whole Apple TV. But, um, just, yeah, it's a real nice, simple little thing we can plug in, turn them loose. Uh, we've got quite a few in the district. Some schools are starting to figure out that that's a great purchase, uh, for their building. And so we're starting to put them out there a little bit more. But we wanted to be able to get our...